Together, we have about fifteen hours together. And so when you put it that way, you realize that you've got to spend that time really wisely. And so I asked the committee to, you know, for us to all work together to try to bubble up a list of priorities, understanding that we had, as I specified in the previous slide, some specific things that we are supposed to do according to the bylaws that we're supposed to do on behalf of the Board of Trustees. And that is, while there's some really interesting things about the AMSA curriculum that'd be great to delve into when we only have fifteen hours, that can be problematic. A second thing I wanted to do was to do some development of the committee, clarifying the membership and the mission. I think the idea of are you a member of the committee was somewhat squishy. We certainly are wanting to welcome our participation by everyone, but I'm also, you know, wanting there to be an understanding that as members of the committee, we have a responsibility to prepare ourselves, to come to the meeting having prepared, to engage in the agenda, the strategic priorities, the work of the committee, and so forth. Also wanted to clarify the mission, which I did on the previous slide there, but just to make sure it was clear. I started to do a little bit of committee training by taking, making the committee as a whole aware of some of the documents that were driving us. The Mass General Law that feeds the Code of Mass Regulations that feed down to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education policies that then feed to our bylaws, and those bylaws specify what we're supposed to do as a board and what the Education Committee is supposed to do as a committee. And I want to make sure that we sort of understood as a committee how that drives both what we do as well as what we're not supposed to be doing. I also wanted to take a look at key design elements because sort of faithfulness to the charter, well, what does that mean? Fortunately, we have a document, a relatively recent document, because we went through rechartering. We have then a, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education put together as part of that rechartering their summary of review, a document where they reviewed us. And one of the things, obviously, that they're reviewing was our faithfulness to the charter. And in that, they define sort of how they measured our faithfulness to the charter. And I think that's very illustrative. Obviously, the Accountability Plan was another part of the rechartering, and so I wanted to make sure, and we spoke, we talked about that a little bit as well. So that effort will continue. Chris and I and Sarah Snow had been working earlier to put together a document that the Governance Committee has been working on, that they graciously allowed me to also sort of weigh in on, because it has to do with these key design elements, which again affect the Education Committee. And so that is an effort that will continue on. If we're going to sit here and make recommendations, the committee is going to make recommendations to the board about policies and curriculum directions and so forth. You don't do that without money, so we need to also be a part of the budgeting process to make sure that the resources are there. Another activity, another goal here is that I wanted to put in place a habit of the committee to report out each spring to the Board of Trustees on its progress as well as its recommendations. And then a final committee goal is to do a committee self-evaluation. We've done a lot of good work this year. We're not where we need to be, but we've done a lot of good work, and I think this self-evaluation will feed some of the goals as we go forward into the coming year.
Ken, how did you, I'm not sure if you said this, so how do you determine your priorities? So for your fifteen hours, how did you come up with a way to figure out what to work on?
So part of that was a discussion, and so, you know, we, by bringing them forward, then we, you know, sort of talked about it. I mean, there wasn't really a formal voting, but you, you know, there was some, you know, sense of people resonating with particular goals. You know, for example, using technology in supporting learning at the school was, you know, was one that resonated a lot. Using alternative learning strategies, and this covers a wide area, I'm going to talk about that on the next slide, was another one, encouraging innovation. So there were several that sort of resonated up to the top, and then by, you know, I tried to give all of them sort of fair play, but, you know, again, you can sort of sense that some were resonating more than others. Great question. Okay, so our big challenge, I think, for this year is really to be disciplined in our governance role. The committee supports the board. Obviously, hopefully, our activities also are helpful to the school. I mean that because there are parents on this committee, then this is a really good venue for the school to hear the perspective of the parent population of the AMSA community. Certainly not the only one, there's the PTO, there's the parent rep, there's lots of other things. But again, this is, you know, this is a good way for the school to connect with that. That said, our role is a governance role, which means that we're focused on planning a framework for the work, understanding the goals that are there, and working to ensure that the goals are met, as opposed to a management role of organizing the work or operational role of actually doing work, which are the purviews of the administration. And so, so, for example, when we, when we turn to academic program success, there's a, you know, AMSA has a curriculum. And again, by Mass General Law and Code of Massachusetts Regulation, the board has a role to approve that curriculum and the policies around it. So there's a, so there's a curriculum, and there are certain goals that that curriculum reflects, certain goals that we set out each year that we're trying to achieve, the school is trying to achieve. And then how do we evaluate how we're achieving that, you know, the success of that academic program? The school clearly is doing some things on its management and operational role. So one of the challenges has been for the committee to sort of make sure that it's staying up at that governance role and preparing to, to, you know, sort of assist, support the board as a whole in what should we be doing as a board in order to ensure academic program success? If the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or someone else came to us and said, "How do you know? How do you measure the success of your academic program?", would we as a board feel confident in our ability to respond to that? I don't think we're, I don't think we lack confidence in that. Clearly, the performance of our school is such that we are confident that we are successful. But are we able to articulate that? And that's something that we've been working on. Faithfulness to the Charter, as I indicated a little earlier, is another thing where we have this charter with key design elements and objectives, certain measures that we're supposed to have in place. The Dr. McCleary is the one who puts together the Accountability Plan, and it gets approved by the, by the board, and then, you know, the, obviously, that is also then a measure that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uses to assess us as we submit our annual reports and as we, five years from now, go through our new chartering. But, you know, are we prepared to articulate how faithful we are to our charter, a charter that was written many years ago, some elements of which we have continued to do and some elements of which have clearly evolved over time? And no one suggests that, that, you know, we should rigorously follow that charter letter by letter. But Dr. McCleary has also made it clear that there are many things in the charter that he finds very appealing, and I think we all, by extension, find appealing. And so, again, this idea of faithfulness to the charter, how are we as a board going to define that, to measure that, and so forth, from a governance role? So then we started to move beyond those, sort of those larger two issues to sort of what is our governance role and some more, you know, they're still strategic, but it's clearly, you know, getting down more towards that tactical. So role of technology was probably the, the, a role of technology in supporting learning at the school was probably one of the ones that had gotten a lot of play. Certainly, that has been discussed in other venues as well. Dr. McCleary, you know, posed sort of a statement that, you know, technology is a tool that we use. We currently use it at the school to support learning, but it can also become a crutch. I think we all have been, you know, been in places where, you know, you go to a restaurant or something, and some person who, you know, can't make sort of very routine calculations of, you know, what's ten percent off of an eight-dollar charge, those kind of things, you know, are worrisome. And so, you know, you see now that people use calculators to do that sort of rudimentary thing. In a school environment, as Dr. McCleary posed, you know, that can really hurt the learning process. And so there are times when we want to rely on pencil and paper to make sure that, you know, people know how, how to actually, you know, do the mathematical calculations, how to write, and so on and so forth. Now, that said, clearly, technology can support instruction. It also can give us access to content that we wouldn't otherwise have access to. And it also allows for collaboration. And I'm particularly sensitive to this collaboration aspect, because being in Maynard and my daughters, you know, having to connect with students, the fact that, you know, we limit and restrict the use of technology within the school makes it more difficult for my daughters to collaborate with their fellow students. And so trying to figure out that balance is very difficult. Now, that balance, the equation of that balance has a management and operational response to it, which is really the purview of Dr. McCleary and the school to take a look at. But it also has sort of a governance, curriculum oversight aspect to it, which we as a board are going to have to struggle with. And so, you know, sort of setting out the framework for how we feel that technology ought to be used, that's something that I think the Education Committee is very interested in being able to bring our recommendations to the board. There are similar-
Ken, do you anticipate that happening this year? Do you anticipate bringing technology recommendations to the board this year?
Well, so just, and to be clear, the recommendations are going to be at that governance level, okay, of how should we, how should we prepare ourselves to carry out the discussions around technology so that we're discussing that at a governance level as opposed to trying to get down into, you know, should we use, you know, you know, iPads or, or, you know, some other-
It's a subboard versus a product.
Right. And so, you know, again, the thing is, is that those, those strategic discussions are really interesting, but more it sure gets interesting to, you know, get down into the details as well. And so that's one of the things that, you know, I think. So to answer your question, I think we will have a beginning of a discussion before the end of this year. And where we as a board, I mean, the Education Committee, I think, will bring to the board a framework for discussion, or at least the beginnings of a framework, and where the board decides to take that, obviously, is for the board to decide. So just in the interest of time, two other, two other topics that came up were around encouraging innovation in classroom. And so, you know, what are some things that we could do to, you know, to encourage innovation? And what is a framework for, for doing that? Not every innovation is a good thing, and so how do you encourage innovation in a good direction that is faithful to the charter and will support academic program success? And then alternative learning strategies. So I just listed two things there, but there, we really talked about so many different things. Alternative learning strategies, you know, allow us to, allow the school to tap into other opportunities to reinforce learning. So this may be a field trip somewhere, could be international, could be local, okay? It could be an internship that allows someone to take sort of the theoretical body of work that they learned in the classroom and see it exercised in a practical way. It also, alternative learning strategies also tap into strategies that will allow people to have different learning abilities and different learning styles to, to, to learn more effectively and so forth. And so that's been a discussion, and again, a very rich one. There are others, but again, in the interest of time, I just wanted to cover those three. As I said in May, I expected, I'm hoping that, you know, after a couple more meetings, we will have a set of recommendations to bring to you. We also will be doing a self-evaluation and starting to look at goals for the coming year. There are some things around finishing out that key design elements document with the Governance Committee, bringing some of the training that we've done as a committee to the board as a whole. And one of the things I had wanted to do was bring an outside person onto the board, someone outside the AMSA community that had an educational background to, you know, provide sort of an outside perspective to the committee. Some initial efforts that I had were unsuccessful, didn't bear fruit, but hopefully in the coming year, we'll do that. So, so that's where I'd like to, you know, sort of end my part, and I entertain any sort of questions or discussion on that. Ken, Chris?
Ken, great report. Thanks very much, and I really appreciate the, your original insight about what can we do in fifteen hours was very, very helpful to me, and I really try to organize what my committee's doing anyway.
What conversations, if any, have we had about project-based learning versus what I think the direction our charter kind of goes, comes from, which is more you learn the theory in an orderly, progressive way, and then you apply it. And, you know, with project-based learning, you haven't become kind of all the rage in the last few years, and I think there was some of that mixed up. There was some of that in the mix last year when Dr. D'Amello was here, because she came more from the project-based learning.
Is that a subject of discussion? So we've had a lot of subject of discussions around curriculum, to be sure. I think the challenge that I keep trying to push is to have these discussions stay at that governance level. For me, what I want to be able to bring as a committee to the board is a framework for us to have discussions around, you know, the, you know, the core accountability aspect of academic program success and faithfulness to the charter, okay? And so those very much more strategic frameworks are what I'm trying to drive, in other words, have the committee bring forward. And the analogy, I guess I would bring is, you know, the Finance Committee has a framework for discussing the finances of the school. They, we don't get into the details of every single expenditure. We look at a chart, and, you know, there's obviously a lot of numbers on that chart, but there are, you know, those accounts that roll up at a strategic level help us understand the financial health of the school, okay? I don't feel that academic program success or faithfulness to charter, that we have that same framework for discussion. And so I purposely have tried to avoid specific curriculum initiatives or strategies and focus more on what framework should the Education Committee bring to the, to the board as a whole for them. Great question.
Ken, would that include, for example, like results from MCAS or where our kids transitioning into college? Would that sort of be rolled up in terms of what you're thinking about?
So absolutely, because, you know, how is it, you know, how is it, again, if somebody came to us and said, "Is your academic program successful?", I think we would say yes. Clearly, there's indication, very clear indication that it is, okay? Are you prepared to really, you know, have a rich discussion on how, how we feel as though AMSA, given its charter, given the key design elements, should be assessing beyond sort of the, the standard measures of MCAS and so forth? So, you know, we've talked, you know, about, well, you know, you know, do, you know, do kids get into the colleges that they want to get into? You know, is that, you know, you know, some people would say, I think some people would say, you know, getting into college is a good measure. And then others would say, well, getting into good colleges is, is a better measure. And others might argue with that or against that. And so, again, having a discussion around that, I think, is, having a framework for us to have a discussion around that, I think, is important. So measures of evaluation, yes, definitely, we want to be able to have discussions aboard about how we would, how we would evaluate that. And that discussion has to reflect, you know, sort of a collective process of our own view of the other constituencies, how do our students, you know, see academic program success? How do parents see academic program success? How do teachers who see them in the classroom see that? How does our administration who has experience in that? How does the outside world who hires our graduates?
Yeah, I was going to say, you can see that at an alumni level at some point.
Right, exactly.
How do we gather or garner that information in AMSA college where they're going on to?
Absolutely. And we are increasingly going to have access to a, we are going to have access to an increasing alumni body now where we can start to get that and say, "Okay." You know, so, you know, when we have the folks come back, the kids come back from college, and, you know, they've been, you know, been there for a few months or maybe a couple years, and they sit there and they say, you know, "I was able to go into class, I was able to succeed, I was prepared, I had heard a lot of this stuff before, I was, you know, I was prepared, I, you know, I was successful and so forth, and I wasn't stressed out as much as some of my, my peers who were having, I was able to avoid taking some of the classes that were remedial in nature because I had such a strong foundation in writing and math, et cetera, et cetera." I think that, those are some of the things that tell us, not that MCAS scores aren't that, I'm sorry.
Probably the greatest measure, I would think, as to how we did overall once they've left here, more so than even when they're transitioning up.
Yeah, we had, we had a lot of conversations about that, how to, how to track it and-
Yeah.
So, so, you know, so there are some measures that are easier to get. MCAS scores, very easy to get, okay? But perhaps not as illustrative of long-term success as we might want to have. But we're also not as prepared to necessarily cap into our larger alumni body, even the ones that we know, you know, is this, does this represent the entire experience of our alumni body or just the ones who, who come back and, and tell us?
Right.
You know, if you hear, "I'm successful, I'm successful, I'm successful," is that a skewed sampling or not? So, yeah. It has been very interesting, several meetings, very rich discussion.
Yeah, and you're right, the data, which is also just as important in those situations where individuals haven't been as successful in getting that feedback, which, as you said, is a little bit hard to get that type of information, but very important.
It is very important. We've had a lot of talks about that. Nobody comes back to their high school and says, "I was terrible. I dropped out. I'm in rehab." No, we don't hear back from those people.
Well, and so, you know, some of, some of the measures that we have, obviously, Dr. McCleary and the faculty have access to some of those measures, and we have, you know, a long history of data going back. I don't know that those are the ones that we as a governing board necessarily want to rely completely on over the long term. So again, it's this framework that I want the, you know, I'm hoping the Education Committee brings to the board to feed those discussions.
Thank you very much, Ken. So we'll expect an update this May?
Tendably, I would like it to put out May, because I know we will not be ready next month, and I know we've got the budget next month anyway, and so I was hoping to May.
Okay. And governance?
Governance. Majority of our meeting was spent really on goals, and you have two documents in your folder. Can you bring them up on board on track?
No, so maybe we can just talk to them.
You're on the meeting.
Yeah. Like under governance.
I wonder, well, Board on Track and I are not getting along right now, so I suggest we just talk, we just talk to them at this point in time.
It's, it's board off track for the moment.
So the first document, which we want to take a look at, is the one that says, "Board Goals," but what's different from our last month's meeting is you see committee assignments on there. So in governance, and they're in red, governance has spent time looking at the goals we have come up with.
Which one are we looking at? The one with the red or the one without the red?
The one with the red.
Thank you.
And so in red, you'll see for each of the goals what we proposed in governance as far as ownership of each of those goals. So the intent here would be for everybody to look at this, and certainly if there are any that you are in disagreement with, we want to spend a minute to talk about that. So you can see under organizational viability, first one, a lot of that is currently ongoing right now. Faculty survey feedback task force, Ken, you gave a report out at the last meeting of the task force, so that's sort of ongoing, so we felt that the faculty survey feedback task force was really the one that's sort of honchoing that at this point. Next several, B, C, and D, governance on those. Faithfulness to charter, that first one really, really said the sort of joint one between the Education Committee as well as the Governance Committee. The guiding principles, which Chris, yourself, Ken, and Sarah have all been heavily involved in, so that's really sort of an overlap between Education Committee and Governance. And then the next one, which was this issue of special challenges faced by non-Marlboro student and parent perspective of all stakeholders, and I think, Ken, you really spoke to that one, so we said, there's really a need for a new task force.
I'm sorry, can, can you elaborate on that? I'm not sure what you mean by non-Marlboro students. Should it be non-coretown students?
No.
Or non-Marlboro?
Hudson, Maynard.
So, yeah, so I'll speak to you again. So I, so for, for students and their parents who live in Marlboro and go to school in Marlboro, the sheer number of Marlboro students in the AMSA community, and, and the geographic proximity to home gives them a very different experience than if you're having to commute in from Maynard, Hudson, or Clinton, or any of the other non-coretowns that we're continuing to serve. And so, you know, over time, we're going to see, you know, more, you know, we're, we're going to see more and more- going to see more and more kids from the, the other three core towns coming to, to AMSA. We have a charter that says that we're supposed to serve four core towns. I think, you know, I think in, in many ways, we serve the students of Marlboro particularly well. I think there are many ways that we don't serve the students of the other three core towns well, and we have it, we have a charter responsibility to do that.
Ken, what are, what are some of the ways we don't serve the others?
So, so, you know, it, it runs a whole gambit, so you have, when you're a, a new sixth grader and you're, you come to school here, if you're from Marlboro, you have a lot of classmates, a lot of friends already in the population. If you're from one of the other core towns, not quite so much. It's usually, you know, very easy for Marlboro kids to get together. It is typically difficult for others, for, for kids from other core town to, to get together. And when that particularly involves things like car pools, because obviously you're at a great, you know, distance, so if you're wanting to participate in after-school clubs or sports or any of the other activities and so forth, it becomes very difficult. Now, some of that, we're not gonna get past. You know, we're never gonna be able to make the experience of my daughters who live in Maynard the same as if they lived in Marlboro. I understand that. I also, in so acknowledging that, I think there are things that we can do to address some of those, some of those challenges. I think there are other things, you know, another example is, you know, we very late found out that the kids from Framingham were not gonna have a bus this year because of the, you know, because of, you know, there were not enough subscribers to the bus. As the dynamics of our student demographics change, to the extent that we can maybe predict these, take steps to, you know, try to address them, then we're probably a bit better off. But we do, in fact, have a responsibility to the other three non-Marlboro core towns by our charter, and I, you know, that was, that's the genesis of that.
I think, to that point, Ken, I think it's important that we make the distinction between saying that students from not Marl, non-Marlboro students have a different experience. That, I think, is, is, that we, we can agree with, especially with issues with transportation and stuff. But whether or not the, the school serves them equally, I think is different from whether or not they have the same experience. Do you know what I mean by that?
I'm not sure I do.
Well, for instance, it might be harder for somebody from Clinton or Maynard to make friends, but that does, at, when they come on the first day, but that doesn't mean that the school is not serving the children equally.
Well, there are things like projects, that if you don't live in Marlboro, it's actually harder if you live 45 minutes away to collaborate on a project, to get together with someone who lives, you know...
Yeah, I, I, I know what you're saying, I'm just trying to be careful about the language here, because I, I, I think there's a difference between, is it the same experience and is the school serving them the same? I think our, our differences in language is that, I think, that we should be careful about.
It sounds like it's more logistics than anything else, is that, am I off-base on that?
So, it may be logistics, all I'm saying is, is the, the experience is, the experience is different. And, you know, to what extent is that? I hear comments, I hear, you know, I hear comments, I mean, obviously, I go through it, okay? You know, frankly, I'm not the only non-Marlboro parent on the board. But, you know, my, my interest as a member of the board, having a responsibility for ensuring faithfulness to charter, I think there are things that we can do to ensure that we are serving all four core towns well, and if we're not doing that, what do we do about that? It is, you know, it is very different when you walk in to a classroom and, you know, half of the kids know one another and you're from a core town where there's, you know, one or two other in your grade, okay? Dr. McClary, it looks like you were about to say something.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I, I think that's, that's probably true to some extent, that's the experience of anybody who comes into a new school, that you don't know your peers as well as you will after a year or even half a year. But I think that one of the goals of the school, and certainly one of the things that I've been trying to promote even this year, is that we encourage in the students the openness and the affability and the kindness and these kind of habits that would engender friendships naturally, even with people that you maybe weren't in the same middle school with the previous year.
Well, so if you're a Marlboro kid, for example, and you come in in sixth grade, you already know a bunch of kids, and over the course of that summer, you can, you know, you can sit there and engage in activities, so day one, you've got some other people who you know. If you're from Maynard or Clinton or Hudson, not so much. You can't find out who the other Maynard kids are. You don't know. You don't know until you show up at the bus, unless somehow, some other way, you've been able to find out who those other, who those other, other kids are. And so that whole summer goes by and, you know, you're missing opportunities to, to do that, to, to, to build on those, to, to build on those friendships. When you come here with all the other sixth graders, there's a whole bunch of kids who know one another and you don't. And so when that group splits apart, instead of being able to maintain connection and maybe get together with some of those kids over the course of the summer to start developing those friendships, you start day one a little bit behind. When you're sitting here, you know, then into the school, and, you know, it's one thing when you're a couple blocks away and you can ride your bike over to sit here and talk to somebody you're working on a project. It's a whole nother thing when you're, you're, you know, I've got, you know, my daughter's talking to a girl who lives up in Andover, okay? And they're sitting there, you know, FaceTiming as they're working on their project together, okay? And so the whole logistics around that, I mean, Scott's right, to some extent, it's logistics, but it may be other things as well.
So I think to Ken's point, I think there's enough anecdotal noise out there at this juncture in time. There appears to be a charter requirement that we make sure that we're servicing, you know, these people. I think that putting together a task force to identify what the challenges are seems appropriate. Whether we're gonna invest, you know, $7 million in, in some new program is, we need to understand what the challenges are. It seems like we don't understand what the challenges are at this point, so I don't really see what the problem, putting together a task force to, to explore, if there, if there are in fact challenges, or it's a little noise.
And there may be some easy things we can do, which might just be identifying those students who are in close proximity with one another or from the same towns. It might just be a simple way of networking, which might be getting at some of, not necessarily all, but some of the issues that presently are coming up, just from a network, you say.
Yeah, that's one of the, one of the things, I think, the PTO brought up this year is they wanted the school to help them with putting together a directory. It was voluntary, so that parents could more readily form car pools, friendships, contacts, and that, that was something, I understand.
Yeah, that's happened always.
Thank you, you answered my question.
We did, we did do that, you know, we did help, help them to get that.
There, there are other things that have happened in the past too, like we had a games night of like incoming sixth graders and ways for them to meet each other, and there's, there's been events like that.
I definitely think that task force is, would be smart.
Is it a board issue?
Is it a board issue in that it's relevant for the charter?
To the charter, yes.
Faithfulness to charter, okay, thank you.
Okay, let me keep moving here. Third one there, we had academics, under academic success, ensure development of alumni relations function. We really saw that as more of a development committee item, so we've got, got a development person. In the lab, let's see, develop metrics to track alumni again development, I'll tie together. And then the last one being board development metrics for the board's progress as well as recruiting new trustees.
I, I would also add the development metrics that finance, I mean, not so finance, but fundraising should have. Saying that too, we're getting involved in that.
In which?
The, the development of metrics of tracking alumni?
It's being assigned.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the name is now...
Fundraising and Development.
Oh, okay.
So, just a couple comments. So, on the recruit three new trustees, one of the things that I, you know, one of the things that I think we ought to look at as a board is that the recruitment pipeline may start with people participating in committees.
Yeah.
And so part of this is not just recruiting people to the board, but recruiting people to the committees and helping them understand, you know, that they could, you know, that they could serve on committees. That's sort of a, it's a, it's a low commitment in terms of time, a way of sort of getting to understand, you know, governance versus, you know, operations and, you know, what are some ways that I can contribute. Some people might stay on the committee and we certainly need those, and some people might express an interest, you know, there. The other question I had is, on the very first one, where you say, "Identify top priorities from faculty service and surveys and develop action plans." I know that we had put together a task force with regard to the feedback that, that we had specifically, you know, from, from the, you know, that was associated with the, with our annual meeting. Is this task force continuing on? Is this, is, did we charter this task force as a, not a permanent task force, it's sort of an oxymoron, but, you know, sort of a more, a longer-term task force? I thought that was sort of a one-time thing.
It was a one-time thing. So this goal was, I mean, so the goal we talked about before, like, that, that goal's supposed to be done by March, would be now?
Oh, so, so we're, we're considering that done?
Well, I mean, Dr. McClary's working, you know, the board part of it is done.
The board part is done.
The board part is done.
Oh, okay, all right.
I was gonna ask that too, Ken, I didn't know what March meant.
The execution part, we have to call some...
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, so the tracking, so anything that didn't sort of get owned by a different committee was sort of owned by the board?
Okay, okay, thank you, thanks for clarifying.
So as much as I'd like to fly under the radar screen, I think we would be a mess if we didn't have something in here relative to managing the school's finances. Probably in the organizational viability section.
Yeah. We didn't add that to our board goals.
No.
You do such a good job, Tom, we didn't have to think about it.
Well, it's one, one way, you know, like, add that, one way that that is checked on annually is through the DOE's requirement that we submit an audit to them, financial reports.
Which would imply that we, you know, we, we manage our finances and we get, you know, we get clean audit at the end of the day, or at least, I think, to that, to that goal. Or I could fly under the radar.
So, in terms of this new task force, are, are we ready? I would like to see this new task force get started, because I think it's going to take some number of months to get data, to survey parents and so forth, and come up with a set of recommendations.
So can we let Ed finish the governance goal?
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, and actually, that, we'll, we'll come to that one also.
Okay. Well, it's a good segue.
Very good segue. So I'm gonna shift over now to the goals for governance, where we took the initial sheet that we just went over with the intent to develop SMART goals, which are specific measurable, keep them over the list as timely. So the first one there, actually the first two really fall under organizational viability, collaborate with administration to launch family survey, we specified in April, identify top priorities, develop action plans, and we see that really sort of doing that collaboration with the administration, Dr. McClary. And, and those action plans, we said, within, within a month of, of the results of the surveys. Assessing effective BOT communications, also again, under board viability. And in this case, we're really talking BOT communications, and we define may as to, let's see, assessing that effectiveness. So we had quite a bit of discussion in our last meeting relative to, one of the ways that we might assess some of that communication is that there are actually companies out there that do this, perform this specific role. So at our next meeting via conference call, we'll have the executive director of one of the companies, it's called NSPRA, National School of Public Relations Association, and they perform a service in assessing communications of typically school districts, some individual schools also, and we'll have a conference call with them just so that we can ask them our questions relative to what value-add they might bring if we were to consider engaging them as, as far as assessing the level of communications that we're presently doing.
Is that the next, I'm sorry, is that the next governance meeting or the next board meeting?
Next governance.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is a governance item, and so this will be one for us to, again, ask our questions, and is this a company that we might want to engage? We've talked a lot about communications at the board level, school level, so they actually have the bandwidth where they've been doing this type of work probably for the last 20 years or so, so we'll have a conversation there. Dr. McClary, you might want to feel free to join us if you're available for the next board meeting, or at least this section of it anyway, because it'll be around communications. You also have the ability to focus on school communications beyond just the board itself.
It's the same night of the ED coffee.
That's right. We heard that earlier.
We'll be communicating.
It's the same night, we talked about that.
Maybe we could install a phone in one ear?
That's right.
One in your shoe?
That's right. Let's see, faithfulness to charter is the next one, which we just talked about, Ken, which you just asked about. And so it's really the board that, I think, recommends committee members or agrees on the committee members for the new task force, but we certainly thought about, your name certainly came up, was having had some passion around this issue, we thought about Rick also. So whether we have that discussion now or we form that task force, and to your point to Ken, to sort of get that going, and we talked about, well, just that one. So task force needs to be formed by now. Let's see, the next one really is, the next two are under board development, and the next one there really being key progress metrics for measuring BOT effectiveness with our goal to have those in place at the start of the next school year by September. And then we've already sort of touched on board development and trustees, and noted your comment, Ken, around the, one possible step certainly being working on committees prior to actually joining the board.
Ed, how many trustees are you seeking to have on the board?
We said three in the original.
What's the total?
I think, how many total?
Total? What's the total number of trustees that were?
Oh, ideally, they're 13 or 15.
Yeah, I was gonna say 12, 13.
Ooh, 13's not good.
Right now, it's 12.
I would just think of what you've got in this document or what you've got in this document.
Yeah, it was actually taken from...
With governance, is doing it for, to develop pipeline of five to, to get to a four-year or...
Yeah, in some cases, we combine some.
I, I would just, if, if we're giving, the board is saying that we want to recruit three new trustees, and we're giving the Governance Committee the responsibility for that, it would seem to me that the Governance Committee would have a goal of recruiting three new trustees.
Some governments have given itself a goal of five.
It's giving itself a goal of five can dates is what it's giving itself.
Right.
Yeah. Governance can have whatever goals they want, I'd suggest keeping it simple, and I, regardless, I'd put a time date on five.
Yeah, you do that. Yeah, actually, to your point, originally we said by December, two, three new trustees by December, so we put that on this, we wrote it.
So I also had in my notes that for number one, because the family survey is, is coming up soon, I had a couple people who are at governance, hopefully you can, you have this written there, I had both Rick and Liz, that we recommend that those, they be the two, is that right?
For family surveys?
Yeah, family surveys.
We may have, I didn't have a note on that.
Liz, will you be surprised?
Well, I wasn't at the governance meeting, so that's fine. I was joking.
She was, she was.
It makes sense. Yeah, no, I was joking that this is what happens.
She was saying she was very proud to be nominated.
Under number one, but also, then you had said for the recommending the task force members under number three.
Right.
I definitely remember Ken.
Ken, we also talked about Rick potentially, I said, but then to Liz, that might be something that we may or may not want to engage in, because it does deal with parents.
She's a Marlboro parent, so.
But she's a parent rep.
Exactly. I represent all the parents, not just Marlboro.
Well put. Okay, great.
That was primarily it for governance.
Great. Okay, so we'll just, in closing, talk about upcoming meeting, upcoming agenda topics. In April, we do have the budget for next year. In May, we'll have a CPAC presentation as well as tentatively Ed's many recommendations. And then in June is actually when we do officer nominations.
So just back to May, where we'll be discussing the family survey results in May.
Oh, good point, yep.
So that family survey might be a good opportunity to ask some of the questions that we would want to ask relative to the challenges of non-Marlboro families.
Good thing you've got Liz on your cap before, Ken.
Is she on the task?
I think I just heard Ken volunteer for the task force.
Task force.
That's why we call it a task force.
Yeah.
So, so just, just a point of, just a question here. So are these, is this task force now ready, you know, is the board saying, okay, we're ready to go with this task force? Or is there a vote that's required?
It doesn't need a vote. It's the chair who just appoints people, but I would like a discussion for anyone who is, whether that makes sense to have a task force, Ken, and we're talking.
So Rick isn't here, we had mentioned his name, too, for the, yeah, for that task force.
Look, can we just put it by which task forces we're talking about?
So I think, have we closed on the, well, in this case, we're talking about the one for non-Marlboro.
No, not Marlboro, yeah.
Oh, okay, for non-Marlboro.
Non-Marlboro, Ken, Liz, maybe Rick. Okay.
So what was the question?
The question is, are there any questions?
Maybe Rick to be on this task force.
Well, Rick should know better than not to come to a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what happens. I'll check with him. And then on the family survey, to work with the administration, that would also be Liz and Rick. I did run that one by.
This is why I have perfect attendance at these meetings.
Yeah, you didn't get assigned it.
Yeah.
So, yes, now it's so important. Meeting effectiveness, we did move along quite a bit.
Yeah.
Any comments on the meeting effectiveness?
We're under two hours so far.
A little bit, yeah. All right, with that then, we will adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation and strategies for collective bargaining. Just make it known that we are going to have Dr. McClary as well as Dr. Two as well. Any other questions?
We're going to executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you all.
So has Bill fallen out of the pipeline?
The June meeting, oh, yeah, we get that on the agenda, what the heck. Lavish gift.